All right, let's go ahead and call this to action, excuse our tardiness. Good evening, welcome to tonight's meeting, the City Tucson's Planning Commission. My name is Chris Ortiz Pino, and I am the Vice Chair of the Planning Commission. The responsibilities of this body are to advise the Mayor and Council and the Planning Development Services Department on the adoption of long-range plans, policies, specific plans, and regulations that affect land use and development. Will staff please call roll?
Of course, Commissioner Kinney.
Present.
Commissioner Lampeau.
Present.
Commissioner Lane. Commissioner McCancy. I'm absent. Commissioner Martin.
Here.
Commissioner or Vice Chair Ortiz Pino.
Present.
Commissioner Schwartz.
I'm here.
Commissioner Small.
Present.
Commissioner Walzak.
Here.
Chair Wellitt, absent. Commissioner Young. Absent. And Commissioners Ajier.
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Excellent, thank you for that, Dan. Next item, two, approval of legal action report for September 24th, 2024 Planning Commission Meeting. Chair would entertain a moment, a motion for the approval of the LAR.
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any nays? Hearing none? I can go ahead and move on to item number three. CD 2402, multi-family residential development and adaptive reuse. Would staff please provide their presentation?
Great, excellent, thank you, Vice Chair Ortiz Pino. I also did want to introduce, we do have a new Commissioner with us this evening. So we have Valerie Lane, who, this is her first meeting with us, so welcome and thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Okay, great, so the first item, which is actually the third item, is a proposed adaptive reuse and multifamily housing code amendment. This is a study session. There we go, okay, so as you have experienced from previous meetings that we had, especially related to accessory dwelling units, and we've provided some updates. The House Arizona Legislature has passed some bills related to housing, and to try to help with supply issues related to housing, really in their last session. There's a handful of different bills that were passed, and this is one of those, what we're dealing with tonight related to this, so we're going to be dealing with, this is House Bill 2297. It was named adaptive reuse for multifamily development. There's also a multifamily component that isn't necessarily adaptive reuse, even though there are adaptive reuse measures within this. But yes, that is what we will be pressing this evening. Excellent, so this is House Bill 2297.
Sorry, Dan, really quick, we can't actually see your presentation online.
Okay, let's see. Yeah, Christina's back there, I think she's...
There it is, thank you.
Excellent, thank you Commissioner Lampeau, appreciate it. Perfect, great, so what we're dealing with here is House Bill 2297, this is adaptive reuse for multifamily development. So this is a requirement of cities that are 150,000 or more, which requires us to adapt regulations to allow multifamily residential development or adaptive reuse of at least 10% of existing commercial, office, or mixed-use buildings, without requiring a special exception, rezoning application, or other discretionary municipal review. And then we have to make those changes by January 1st, 2025, to our zoning code. So basically what it is, in the city of Tucson, however, this was really probably intended for municipalities that don't allow currently multifamily development within their commercial zones. So a lot of what we have in this bill and what is being required by the state are things we already do, so as it is now with current city zoning regulations, we already allow for multifamily residential in our commercial, office, and mixed-use zones. But there are some small changes that are necessary for us to come into conformance with this bill. We did host a public meeting on this on October 15th, to just make sure that there was that public input. There was a little bit of discussion mostly related to just kind of clarifications of what the requirements of the bill are for this. So just to talk a little bit about some of the existing tools that we have in the city of Tucson to allow for adaptive reuse, so our Unified Development Code has, as I mentioned earlier, we already allow for multifamily residential uses in those commercial and office zones. We have an adaptive reuse of buildings, basically it's 3338 in our zoning code, but it allows for the adaptive reuse of buildings that were in existence as of May 1st, 2005. That allows for that change of use without having to go through, bring it all the way up to conformance with all of the development codes for it. We have the individual parking plan, so one of the biggest barriers to adaptive reuse is having to park those developments. So we have our individual parking plan, which basically you come in and you justify the reduction in parking or the amount of parking you need, so that helps with those reductions from our general standards that we have for parking. And then we have urban overlays and our infill incentive district, which really support adaptive reuse, it allows for that easy change of use from something like maybe industrial to something like maybe housing or commercial or something of the sort. So this bill essentially requires the city to allow adaptive reuse of existing, and they have in the bill economically and functionally obsolete buildings. And then they give us definitions of those that we utilize as our guidance with it. So the adaptive reuse definition from the state and in this bill is basically converting an existing building from the use for which it was constructed to a new use by maintaining some or all of the elements of the building. So it's key that it's some or all, so you don't have to maintain the entire building, but just a portion of it potentially. And then they talk about economically and functionally obsolete, and a lot of these made their way into our definition that we used, where it basically says the commercial, office, and mixed-use building in a state of disrepair, or has 50% vacancy in the total leasable square footage for that. So those are the key definitions for this bill. Some other requirements of this bill of 2297, by right permissions for the adaptive reuse are required and not more than 10% of total existing commercial, office, and mixed-use buildings within the city. This is really kind of awkward, but basically says that you can allow this tool to be utilized up to 10%, but not more of those types of buildings within the city, so it requires us to keep track of the amount of buildings that have been kind of adaptively reused up until 10%, which is something like, I think like 11,000 buildings or something of that sort. Second one here, to qualify, a total of 10% of dwelling units must be set aside for low to moderate income housing for a minimum of 20 years, in addition to meeting other criteria of the bill for that. So you, in order to utilize this bill or this tool, you have to provide 10% low to moderate income, and that is either 80% AMI or 120% AMI, which is area median income. So there's also a kind of a little bit of a difference in the bill in how they deal with multifamily development versus adaptive reuse. So there's different criteria depending on whether the project is one or the other, and sometimes it can be both. So if an applicant ceases to construct a multifamily development, then the existing buildings can be demolished, so not really adaptive reuse, but just reuse of that property. It doesn't apply to National Historic Districts, Historic Preservation Zones, Historic Landmarks per the bill, so it allows for you to carve out historic buildings for that. And then if it's commercial uses, that's when you have to adaptively reuse, which would be a partial portion of that building would need to be reused for your development. There we go, so that gets us to the proposal, so for this, we have kind of three sections of how we looked at the proposed changes. First is establishing those definitions to match what 2297 had put forth for us, so, and the adaptive reuse and the economically-functionally obsolete, establishing a criteria for how you qualify for being an obsolete commercial building, and then establishing standards for that development, where it's different from what our current code allows, which in a lot of cases, our current code matches what is required by the state bill. So proposed changes, this is the definition changes that we're looking at. So we defined the criteria for obsolete commercial buildings as commercial, office, or mixed-use buildings in a state of disrepair, has 50% vacancy in the total leasable square footage, that matches what the state bill says. It has to be currently zoned for or permitted to be used for a commercial, office, or mixed-uses. Needs to be economically or functionally obsolete. And then it also needs to be located on a parcel or parcels of at least one acre, but not more than 20 acres, so again, this is actually based off the 2297, where it basically says it needs to be, yes, between 1 and 20 acres for you to utilize this tool. Additional proposed changes, these are some standards for mixed-use and multifamily development. They have requirements for parking. Parking needs to be provided as the sum of the uses provided in the development in accordance with the existing requirements, the section 7.4, which is pretty similar to what we do already in the code. Usually when you have mixed use, you park, you know, you park it based on the amount of proportion of you have those uses within it. Setbacks for multifamily development, it may not exceed what is currently in the Unified Development Code. For adaptive reuse, it becomes the least restrictive of either multifamily or those existing commercial, office, and mixed-use requirements. So if you're doing adaptive reuse, you look at either of those and you choose which one to potentially develop under. Some other standards related to this, height and density, it would be the least restrictive of one of these, so either the allowed height of the existing commercial, office, or mixed-use in the zone, or the lowest of the following, which is five stories, or highest allowable multifamily height and density for a multifamily zoning district within a mile. And then if there's no multifamily zoning district within a mile, you would use the closest one to that parcel that would be a multifamily zoning district for this. This would generally, the way we're reading it, is that's an R3 zone, that's generally our multifamily zone, which allows for, I think it's up to 40 feet for non-residential or for residential, and so the five stories wouldn't really apply to that. With that, that is the proposed changes in front of you related to us working to come into compliance with 2297. We recommend that the Planning Commission set this for a public hearing on November 13th, but we're happy to answer any questions you may have related to it.
All right, thank you so much for the presentation, Dan. I'd like to open up to the Commission for questions. Mr. Martin.
Thank you. So Dan, reading the state statute, it seems like the residential and the adaptive reuse are separated as far as the standards. So looking at the setbacks, I think it says for multifamily that it's can't be more than what's allowed by code, I don't see that you get to pick or choose. In adaptive reuse, it looks like you can pick the least of the two.
Commissioner Martin, that's correct, at least that's the way we're reading it as well, is that, yes, for multifamily, it's what's in the code, and then if it's adaptive reuse, you get to pick or choose.
And then I was trying to figure out what you're going to build with adaptive reuse that's not multifamily.
I mean, the way...
You know, it talks about density.
Yeah.
But what has density except for multifamily?
Yeah, it would be probably a mixed-use development, so you have commercial with multifamily, but I believe you can potentially also develop just commercial with this tool.
Yeah, Commissioner Martin, our read of this is that other commercial uses that might not otherwise be permitted could potentially be allowed through this amendment. So I think it's trying to get at, you know, office uses that are no longer as viable, and trying to create opportunities for multifamily and other types of commercial uses that could be, you know, take the place of those office uses.
So I'm going to see one zone, you could have a large bar.
I'm not sure, I mean, I think maybe we need to take a closer look at that, because you're right, it was a little unclear of what types of commercial uses would be permitted. I think it's definitely geared towards residential, just with the understanding that, or kind of awareness that that's the most viable use in most cases for these defunct buildings, but that's a great question, great point.
And under B applicability, it seems like you left out the C that point two, that says you're required to have sewer capacity and water capacity. I know we did a student housing project where we had to build sewer from First and Park all the way south of Third Street, I think down to Fifth Street, because there wasn't capacity, so in reading the applicability, it seems like that standard should be there if somebody's looking to use this or the code and make sure that they know that they have to have that capacity before, you know, they got too far.
Commissioner Martin, yeah, so in general, when you do propose a development, you have to make sure that there is that capacity in order to do so and get approval, but it is something that we could put that clarification in there to make sure that it is in compliance.
I think this is doing due diligence, if you looked at this, and well, there's only four things that you have to meet, and you get down the road and then find out there's no sewer capacity, because, I mean, you did find that out eventually, but just a kind of a... Something to help people, same with the code compliance, because there could be buildings that don't meet the fire code. That, I think those two items that the state put in the statute would be helpful for people trying to use this code section, so.
Great, no, thank you Commissioner, appreciate it.
And then under G4, it talks about military aircraft overlay zones, I think, and and G5 is FAA, it seems like those should be in the applicability, I would guess, too, or somewhere that says that you can't use the standard in those areas, so just help people out, you know, before they get too far down the road.
Thank you Commissioner Martin, appreciate it.
And I assume that the site plan is the development plan standards?
Yeah.
Because that's what we've used for site plans in the past. Under height and density, multifamily residential, it says the highest allowable multifamily height. I just wondered if that should be maximum allowable instead of highest, it's have highest and then height. Then I think there was something about two stories within 100 feet of residential zone in the code. If there was no multifamily within a mile, and I think it could be limited to two stories.
Commissioner Martin, that's correct, that is, that's something that we should clarify on this more, thank you.
And the last thing is, their definition of multifamily is more than one unit, and the use standard is more than three in the UDC, so I don't know if that, this definition needs to be specific to this code section, or there's a whole lot of stuff that's based on...
Yeah, that... No, thank you Commissioner Martin, that's, that'll be a good clarification, obviously if we were to change the definition of multifamily, it would affect the entire code, but I think we could do something specific just to this section to be able to address that.
A whole lot tied to what's multifamily and what's not, so, thank you.
Commissioner Kinney?
Yeah, thank you, and Chuck, you took my point about the definition of multifamily, I was going to point that out as well, so double-check that. So I know the last round of code revisions we did two months ago, whatever, was looked at by, I think, the League of Cities and Towns, and it was kind of done, you know, everyone around the state looking at the same language, is that the same as this, is that the case with this?
Yeah, so Commissioner Kinney, yes, so we have utilized the model ordinance created by the Arizona League of Cities and Towns to help us with this, obviously because we have different standards and we already allow for, you know, multifamily in our commercials and office zones, there was a lot of kind of shifting and changing of some of that, but that was definitely where we started when we did this.
Great. So my only other comments are, you know, I know that multifamily, obviously, is already in the use tables in these zones, but would you consider putting like in the use-specific standards, like a reference to this code revision, so people know that it's an option that they can utilize? Because like right now, you're putting it in 3.12.3, which is pretty much buried in there, it's a section nobody really looks at, so you could consider putting a reference to this in the table, and maybe people will look at it more, but I mean, like you said, this isn't something that is going to be used very much, because we already allow it. But just so people know, it's an option, I think that might be just for usability. And then in your red lines in 3.12.3E at the bottom, you note that there are 1,029 existing buildings? Do you want to tie it to a specific number, because that number's going to change over time? Do you want to just say 10% and you guys keep track of that number? Also, how do you keep track of that number, how do you, where did you come up with 1,029?
Yeah, so it is a challenge, and actually, maybe it's 10% of existing commercial, office, whatever buildings as of this date or something of that sort, and without having an explicit number, so that was an estimate that was based off of some GIS analysis that we did, based on building footprints and the land use layer from the county, but it's not exact by any means, so I think that's a great suggestion.
Yeah, I mean, if it's not even exact, then you probably shouldn't put it in there. You need to put something in there, but maybe just 10% of whatever and use the statutory language or something. I think that's all I got, thank you.
Very good points, thank you, Commissioner Kinney. Commissioner Lane?
Thank you. I have several clarifying questions. What was the, okay, on a very high level, this tool versus the tools we have simply eliminates the need for special processes to ask for rezoning of these kinds of buildings?
So, I mean, that's, I think the intent at the state level was to, yes, get rid of the discretionary processes that were required for someone to take a commercial property and develop multifamily on there, or to redevelop adaptive, with adaptive reuse kind of stuff. So for instance, Oro Valley doesn't allow for multifamily in their commercial zones. They're not 150,000 people, so it wouldn't apply to them, but that's an example of that. So I think that's what they were trying to get at. I, because we already have a lot of those tools in place and we already allow for that multifamily, you wouldn't have to go through a rezoning process anyways, in nearly all cases, maybe not all.
So I wonder if there's not an opportunity here, because it seems like I read that the state language is very much commercial buildings, multifamily development, and adaptive reuse, and we have said the word mixed-use a couple times in here, but it's not written in the revision of this code, and I think that that, like, in my mind of our city evolving and establishing a new zoning pattern with some of the old buildings, a mixed-use would be very beneficial to the streetscapes, and so if we're talking about maybe keeping commercial on the first levels, or opening up opportunities for how mixed-use would happen more easily in these buildings, instead of just focusing on multifamily development, so I don't know how to officially make this as a suggestion, but loosening the language, or maybe shifting to say mixed-use would be included in this, so if somebody's proposing, or like incentivize, commercial uses on the first floor somehow? Okay, and then the 10%, is this like meant to be a number that we cap out at some point in time, and then what, this code goes away?
It says with 10% within 10 years, so you have 10 years to develop out the, you know, approximately 1,000 sites.
And if we don't hit the number in 10 years?
It's fine.
It's fine.
But it just basically says if you hit that number within 10 years, you can't develop anymore.
You can't develop anymore.
Yeah, there's a limit, right?
So, the way I see this is... Sorry, my name's Chris Xavier, we're in the City Attorney's Office. This statute essentially turns the mayor and council and you into a ministerial board if someone meets these criteria, you have no discretion to say yes or no. Right?
Right.
So if you get to the point where you've hit 1,000 conversions, mayor and council would still have the ability to permit additional projects of this type, it just would no longer be a ministerial discretion, it would be an actual adjudication or a consideration of mayor and council, and they could theoretically vote no.
And so also theoretically, then this code could, if we hit the number within less than 10 years, this portion of the code could then...
Or it would essentially convert over to a discretion or review by mayor and council.
Okay. What is the, can you repeat the significance of the date in 2005? It was on one of your first slides.
Yeah, so that was basically when we went through and made those changes back, boy, it must have been in 2015, they wanted to make sure that they were buildings that were in existing 10 years previously, the problem with that, it's not a rolling date. So the further we get away from that date, actually the fewer properties that are actually eligible for it, but that is, that's basically what they, what was done when we made that change, I believe it was in 2015 for our zoning code.
So that doesn't have anything to do with the age of the buildings that we're talking about?
It just basically means that it hasn't changed since 2005.
So it also said that this code would not apply to buildings in a historic zone, can it?
So, I think it's a good question, the ability to tear down a building to convert to multifamily housing doesn't apply.
But that wouldn't be considered adaptive reuse either.
No, it's to this statute, you get to tear down a building if you're going to make multifamily, if you're not in a historic zone.
Yeah.
So that's where I think it's interesting, is though that restriction applies to the basically a complete tear down, the adaptive reuse part would still apply in those areas.
Yeah, I don't think, I think historic districts are excluded. As Dan mentioned in the presentation, we have other tools in those historic districts to promote adaptive reuse, so there are actually some, there is some flexibility, for example, with the type of commercial uses that are, that can...
there is some flexibility, for example, with the type of commercial uses that are, that can be allowed in historic zones. We have our influence incentive district that overlaps with some of our historic zones. So while this tool doesn't apply in historic districts, I think we have other tools to allow adaptive reuse.
Could you, though, if somebody converted a historic building, could you use that to add to your 1,000?
Interesting. I'm not sure. You're saying not using this tool. I think only projects that use this tool count towards that cap.
I just wonder, like, I mean, it seems that you could, you could comply with both. And if you're trying to meet a quota of 1,000 buildings or whatever, like, why wouldn't, and I mean, there's a lot more work that's going on with historic buildings, I think, than the abandoned, you know, office max. Well, okay. And what about city-owned buildings?
Yeah, so this would apply as well to city-owned buildings.
But it does not incentivize necessarily the city to use those buildings for that? Like, is there an incentive underneath this code for the city to promote this kind of adaptive reuse in, in abandoned or like underutilized properties?
Commissioner Lane, I don't think there's an incentive for cities, but I think just the fact that this is a discretionary process, or sorry, takes away any discretionary process and is a by right option is an incentive for the city. And so right now, for example, the city is engaged in a lot of adaptive reuse projects that are creating affordable housing. So this could be a really valuable tool for our Housing and Community Development Department or our Affordable Housing Development Arm, El Pueblo Housing. I, it could potentially be used by the city, absolutely.
Are you guys worried about the tracking portion of the, the job that you have to do to track these projects?
I think that based on what I understand, the city's taken a reasonable approach to determine the number of buildings that are in existence at the time that statute takes place. And so I think obviously, if we never get anywhere close to that number, that's not an issue. But I think if we do get close to that number, I think we've taken a defensible approach that we could defend in court if someone were to claim they either are entitled or are not entitled to the specific, this specific benefit for the 1,131st building.
All right.
I think it's, I think it's, I, I don't, because the statute doesn't provide any guidance about how to do that calculation, I think taking a reasonable approach is defensible. And I think a GIS-based approach is reasonable.
I've got no more, no more questions.
Commissioners Small?
First, a couple of clarifications. We threw out the, you know, the 10-year fade out of this tool, and I'm reading the red lines that says set aside at least 10% of total dwelling units, et cetera, et cetera, combination of the two for at least 20 years after the initial occupation of the proposed development.
Is that, hold on one second.
Yeah, Commissioner Small.
Is that related to?
Are you referring to the affordable restriction, maybe?
Is, that's the absolute, oh, I'm sorry, that's the obsolete commercial building redevelopment. That may be different, okay. And then regarding the, regarding the 10% cap, the not more than 1,029, which I guess you're, you're saying there's 10,290 currently. So has any, anything that's been developed previously count against that, against that number?
Commissioner Small, no, it'd be as of the date of adoption.
As of the date of the application. Okay. And then I can't find the clause, but there was, there was some mention of, you know, as long as a portion of the existing structure is remaining.
Yes, it's, Commissioner Small, I believe it's the definition of adaptive reuse.
Adaptive reuse. I was scrolling through and I couldn't. There we go. Maintaining some or all of the elements of the building is, is there a definition of what that is? I, I come from most of my professional life up in Portland, Oregon, where they would tear down houses except for one little wall in the back and call it a remodel. And I'm, I'm just wondering if there's any, any further definition to what, you know, maintaining some or all of the, some of the elements of the building means?
Yeah, so Commissioner Small, I think we can maybe look to try to clarify a little more, but I, I will say that the definition that's in the state bill says a portion of that building, and they don't really clarify what that is. So we have to be careful as far as how we actually define that to where it actually causes problems.
We're going to copy and paste.
Okay.
Then a judge can tell us what it means.
As long as you're prepared for that, okay, yeah. If you're going to do an old, if you do an abandoned Walgreens, you have to keep the front entry or something, right?
Ends up being some dispute about what a portion means. It's obviously going to be a judge that has to decide.
Fair enough.
Commissioner Martin?
Yeah, I just had one more question. When you said it has to comply with the, it's currently zoned up, that would include overlay zones or IID or?
It does, it, it doesn't exclude overlay zones, IID or anything like that. So those are.
Would have to be, meet the standards of that overlay district.
Those, so those are optional overlays, so.
But to be currently zoned, right? For the commercial and under be currently zoned for permitted reuse. So it's just, you know, the the current use has to meet the standards of the zoning that's appropriate for the property, I guess.
Yes, yes, that's, that's correct.
Which could include overlay zone requirements.
Could, or any, yes, any additional overlays and things of that sort, yeah. Of course, thank you. No worries. I just wanted to point out that Commissioner Lampeau does have his hand up online.
Thank you for pointing that out. Commissioner Lampeau, sorry for missing you.
It's okay. It is difficult to see members online, so sorry I wasn't in person. I would just like to echo Commissioner Kenny's comments, the cap that's worded really strangely. How, how, how did that number come to me? You said that there was some GIS analysis, and what did that consist of?
Yes, Commissioner Lampeau, we were trying to get an estimate on what that would be. It was basically looking at the assessors' data for land use, for, you know, land use codes for commercial office, et cetera, of what we've thought was reasonably within the categories that the bill said. overlaid that with footprints and building footprints, and then pulled all of those out that way to get an understanding of approximately what that number is. But as Commissioner Kenny had mentioned, I think it makes a lot more sense to just say 10% of those types of buildings and leave it at that.
I completely agree. That, that can be a flawed analysis, but the other thing I was, I was wondering, just related to GIS, so within one mile of a multifamily zone, did you happen to run an analysis and see how much land then becomes available within one mile of multifamily zone?
So Commissioner Lampeau, are you saying, did we look at the number of building, buildings that are commercial office that are within a mile of a multifamily zone, or are you saying?
That, that's correct.
They'll just relate it to building height? Now, we have, so again, we haven't done that analysis to get an understanding of the one mile from multifamily to buildings, commercial buildings.
The other, it's more of a request. Is there a way that you can include in our agenda packets for the next meeting, a copy of the model local laws that are produced by the League of Cities and Towns?
Yes, most definitely. Happy to do that.
Thanks. That's all I have.
Not seeing any more hands up. I have my own question, probably. Oh, is there any more online that I missed?
There, there are.
Yeah, no, it's just, it's a breeze. Commissioner Zager has her hand up.
Commissioner Zager, apologies.
That's Zager? Yes, I was wondering, so there are several overlay zones. So are HOAs considered an overlay zone? Do they, do these benefits, I guess, to the city as far as zoning? Do they apply to HOAs or can HOAs actually restrict this type of like casita building in their own little individual space? Or are they like considered like a golf course zone? Let's kind of excluded from the Arizona State statutes as far as this concerns, or a racetrack, private, that sort of thing?
Yes, Commissioner, so the, this would not have any effect on local CCNRs, HOA regulations or anything of that sort. I will say, in general, those are usually residential properties, and this does apply to commercial office, et cetera. But this would not supersede any of those existing CCNRs that are in place.
Oh, so, so this, this particular bill that the state has put through and that we're dealing with right now has nothing to do with residential buildings whatsoever?
Commissioners Zager, it's, it, it has to do with the development of multi, new multifamily residential, but it doesn't have to do with existing residential buildings.
So if somebody wanted to, okay, so, but you, but somebody can actually add more than one, this prevents somebody to add more than one casita to their house or adding a casita in the front yard? To make it a multifamily residence? It's, and maybe I, I, I missed something in the.
Yeah, so, no, it, it has, it really has to be a commercial or mixed-use building. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't apply in that situation. That was more the kind of ADU bill that we had reviewed at the, the last meeting that we had.
Okay, so, so there's no overlap between these two?
No, there's not.
Okay, yeah, that, that was a bit confusing. Anyway, thank you very much.
Are there, and I can't tell if there's any more online. Do I see a hand on there?
That is a member of the public, not one of our commissioners.
Thank you. And then Commissioner Lane, you have another question?
Thank you, sorry, one more. So, and this is maybe two-part and a process question perhaps, but so I understand, I heard you say the word copy paste, and, and I'm looking at the language that you're writing matches the state bill very closely, and it clearly says multifamily residential and adaptive reuse. So is there an opportunity here that the city could take to overlay and include mixed use and like a requirement for commercial ground floors? If they're, say, next to a busy road or?
Commissioner Lane, I'm not sure if there is the ability to require that. But we can look into the language to see if there's a way to include mixed use as well as, as something that is allowed via this tool.
Seems like a missed opportunity not to at least make, make, like, create this pathway, whether it's simply for multifamily or for mixed use together. So I'm not, I guess the process part is what, what's the proper process to suggest this?
No, I mean, we can, we'll take your suggestion. So basically, for the study session, a lot of this is really just getting feedback from the commission, and then taking that feedback and then coming back to you with kind of, you know, a proposal that's reflective of that. So we will take that feedback and look for, you know, if there are ways to kind of either emphasize mixed use, make sure that mixed use is a part of this proposal.
And then one last, like, as we talk more, more scenarios come into my head, if there's a, say, a commercial property that had a building on it that was demolished or fire, let's say, like a, like a property that doesn't necessarily have a full structure on it, that would be allowed to be, like, by the definition of that they're using for reusing a part of, like, could a property, an underutilized piece of property be considered?
So it says buildings. I, if there's like foundation, you could potentially say that that might be a building. Like if something burnt down, as you were saying, if it's a vacant parcel, I don't believe you could utilize this tool.
Okay. An element of a building. An old street sign.
One, one more question. So that sort of sunset clause, the 20 years after initial occupation for affordable housing, is, is there anything similar to that in the UDC right now?
Commissioner Lampeau, so we have some regulations for affordable housing in our influence incentive district, where there's an incentive if you have, you know, I think it's, I'm trying to remember if it's 15% or 20% or whatever, but a certain percentage of affordable units in your development, and it's either 30 years for rental and 50 years for ownership or something of that sort. So we have some similar, but nothing that matches exactly what they have here.
Okay, and I guess, does that run with the land? I, so if the ownership changes hands, does that clock start up again? How, how does that work?
If ownership changes, it's still in, in place. So the clock wouldn't start over. You would just, you would basically take on whatever the, the, those requirements are.
Okay. Thanks.
All right, seeing no more questions, I think we can move on to the next item. We have to call for a motion to recommend Setting Planning Commission public hearing on the multifamily residential development and adaptive reuse. Can you pull up the, the motion screen again? There it is.
Christina, do you mind going back to the presentation? It's just that right there. Perfect.
All right. Can I entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to set this for public hearing at the November 15th, Mayor, Planning Commission meeting.
November 13th.
I'm sorry, November 13th.
Second?
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Do I hear any nays? Hearing none? I'd like to go ahead and set this for. Yeah, move on to the next item, I suppose, yeah. Item number four, Amendment of the Planning Commission Quorum Requirements. Would staff please speak to item four?
Excellent. Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair Ortiz-Pino and the Commission. So again, this is an item that was suggested by Commissioner Martin. We had a bit of discussion related to it at the last meeting, so we're bringing it back for an action item for discussion and potential recommendation. So just a little bit of background, you know, there are requirements for Planning Commission and administration of the Planning Commission that are governed by our Unified Development Code and then also the Planning Commission Rules of Procedure. Um, that are governed by, um, our unified development code and then also the planning commission rules of procedure. Um, the rules of procedure were adopted in nineteen seventy-five. Um, the quorum standards haven't been amended since then, but the rules of procedure have changed since then, but they haven't changed since the late nineties. Um, as if you would have looked at them, you would realize that there are some pretty old references to the land use code. Um, that, uh, probably need to be updated as well. Um, and, uh, there are, the, the current references reflect, uh, previous departmental and organizational structures. And things that have happened and occurred and decisions that have been overturned over time. Um, so just, uh, real quick, uh, current requirements, planning commission has thirteen seats. Um, with a required quorum of seven members, it's a majority of all of the members. Uh, those thirteen seats are. Um, two, uh, two appointments per ward, one in the ward, one at large. And then the mayor gets one appointee as well. Um, the UDC and the rules of procedure, both require seven votes. In agreement for a formal recommendation to mayor and council as well. Um, so this is just kind of showing you what that language is. The language is in UDC section two point two point three. Um, where it basically says seven members of the planning commission, um, presented a meeting, constituted a quorum. And then this concurrent vote of seven members is necessary to make a recommendation to mayor and council. Um, a simple majority of those members present is required to approve or deny any matter in front of the, uh, planning commission, however. Um, uh, you know, to make that recommendation to mayor and council, you really need those seven members. Um, not necessarily an issue when you have thirteen members on your board or on your commission. But when you have seven members that are there and they vote six to one, um, it does limit the ability to forward a recommendation. To mayor and council in those situations. Um, hold on. Second one, uh, this is related to the, uh, rules of procedure, also very similar. Um, in the administrative structures and, oh, what, three F? Um, seven members of the planning commission present at a meeting constitute a quorum. Um, simple majority of those members is required to approve or deny any items except requiring a recommendation to mayor and council. Um, for that. Um, and then it also shows up. Um, in the rules of procedures under the legislative procedure section, which is four K. Um, where it says, as provided by the land use code, again, update that needs to be UDC. Um, the planning commission shall hold a public hearings on adoption and of and amendments to the city general plan, specific plans, et cetera. Upon agreement of seven of its members and shall forward a recommendation regarding each to the mayor and council. Um, so those are really the sections that are related to quorum, related to voting. Um, just to kind of give you an understanding, um, of where those are located in the code. Um, the process to amend the UDC, you guys are a part of this, um, but. Uh, there is the ability, uh, which is governed by section three point seven. Um, for the planning commission where you may recommend a code amendment to our mayor and council. So this is an action item, so if you choose to do so, you would be able to make a recommendation to mayor and council. Um, for a code amendment, um, we would then have to have a study session with mayor and council. Um, where they would go through and initiate that code amendment based on the recommendation. Um, from that, they direct us and we, like any other code amendment, we would develop a code proposal. Um, a proposal for the code amendment and make a recommendation to planning commission and then you would have a study session, public hearing. Ultimately, a recommendation to mayor and council and then they would adopt that. So that is the procedure that would, uh, be in play, that would. We would have to take in order to make changes to those, uh, the quorum rules, um, for the planning commission. Oh, and then the process to amend the rules of procedures as well, um, for that, um, and that's section three H. Uh, may be amended at any regular meeting of the commission by a majority vote of the entire membership. Um, any provision of these rules that is amended or superseded by a subsequent amended to the land use code, development compliance code or Tucson code. Shall be automatically amended to conform. So in essence, you could make changes to that unified development code. And it would autumn, and then you would basically. Um, automatically, this would become amended to conform with the subsequent code provision for that. Um, so with that, that's really, um, this is your, um, up to you for your recommendation, but, um. We, uh, have presented this to you to discuss, um, related to the quorum requirements for the unified development code and the rules of procedure. Um, and make any recommendations for changes to mayor and council if you decide, um, that they are needed. And happy to answer any questions for this.
I see one. Up that is not part of the commission. Commissioner Martin.
Uh, thank you for putting this together down. Um, as I said, I've been on the commission for a long time and. It's been hard on staff and commissioners to not meet a quorum. This, this year I looked, I think we had eleven members. In February, the rest of the meetings were eight and sometimes down to seven because of recusal. So. Even though we have ten or eleven, we're still, you know, barely meeting the quorum, so. I think this is two separate items, the quorum and then how items get approved at the meetings. So my suggestion was that the quorum be a majority of the currently appointed members of the commission. Which now I think would be, still be seven. Um, but there were times where we only had nine commissioners. I mean, it was pretty thin for a few years, so it was hard to get seven at a meeting, so. I think there's that item, what, what constitutes quorum. And then the second item is. We've talked about should it be a majority of the members at the commission or would it be the same as the quorum? You know, seven or six or five, but, um. I'm, I'm not going to be on the commission much longer, so I'm going to have to defer the second part to the current members and, uh. Let them, uh, decide on that, but I, I think changing the quorum to, uh, the currently appointed members. Will help in the times where, when the commission is not fully. All the positions aren't fully filled, so, thank you.
I, I'll add one, um, just quick question. Are there any other BCCs that have a similar format i- in terms of quorum being met by? Uh, number of seated members, uh, specifically when it comes to voting?
I don't know the answer to that. Uh, most of the commissions that I've worked with over the years have the same requirement, quorum of. Of the entire membership, even if there are vacancies, must be. Um, available to make a, to vote on a recommendation, but I don't know if there are exceptions to that general rule elsewhere.
Okay. And are we fully staffed up? Do, or are all of our seats filled right now?
Um, Commissioner Lampo, we, uh, have an opening in Ward four right now. Um, and then I think we will have a couple openings coming up with, um, Commissioner Martin when he turns out. In February, um, in Ward two and then another one in Ward five coming up in the next couple of months.
Okay.
Commissioner Walzak.
Um, in the, uh, UDC attachment for this item, under. Number three, terms and removal from office, what, it, it just refers to a Tucson code, chapter ten A, what's the. Policy for removing members for absenteeism?
Um, yes, so, uh, basically what it is, is you have to attend at least forty percent of a meeting in a calendar year. Um, or if you miss four meetings in a row, um, then you would be removed from the commission.
Was that forty percent?
Uh, that's correct, Commissioner Small, forty percent.
Things low. To me.
I believe Commissioner Zegir has her hand up.
Oh, yes, thank you. I, I think I'm guilty of missing, uh. Four meetings in a row over the summer since I was out of town for two months. So, um. But. I do understand, um, not being able to send a recommendation to the mayor and council. Um, and, um, there, there won't be a commission meeting unless there's seven. I think keeping. Keep making sure there's at least seven members of the commission present to have a quorum for meetings. I think that. Definitely should stand, um. And, um. There, I may be putting in a percentage. I don't think it should be, I mean, if, if, if you guys decide you want to change this, I don't. To, um, just the majority of the seven, um, you could have a three, four split, which is. Would mean that there's something not quite right, is maybe something more of a, you know, seventy-five percent, which would be. Um, five to two approximately, um. Um. I, I'm not really sure. I, I would have to actually defer to, uh, Commissioner Martin since. He has the most experience with, um, the commission as far as. Before he goes is maybe, um, asking his advice since he's been a commissioner for so long. Well, thank you.
Um, uh, real quickly, uh, Commissioners of Gier, uh, so I do want to clarify, we have been keeping attendance. And you did only miss three meetings and not four meetings. Um, so, uh, you did not, uh. Trigger the, uh, the removal from the, from the planning commission. Um, additionally, I do want to mention that, you know, when we do send the recommendation to mayor and council, we document the discussion. So a lot of times, even if it were a, you know, even, even if the recommendation doesn't go through and it's a four to, you know, a four to three vote. Or whatever, we like to say, you know, kind of why there was that four to three vote. It may not be an actual positive recommendation for approval. Um, but we do document that and make sure that that makes its way to mayor and council, so they understand what that discussion was.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Martin.
Thank you, and you know, if it's a. What would, uh, is it a super majority, I guess, of, of, of the members that are present, maybe that's better than a majority? That's an idea, I mean, I think for you all to discuss, but, um. There were times where, you know, there were a lot of six to one or five to two, um, votes. Um, and only because we only had seven members at the, at the meeting, so. I don't know if that's fair to the applicant. You know, it's. Majority thinks it's a good, I, you know, want to make a positive recommendation, but you, you can't do it because there's. Your short one or two votes, so.
So Commissioner Walzak.
I'll just, um, add a couple, uh, some perspective from the county. I work for the county. Commissioner Lane is also. A commissioner on the planning and zoning commission for the county. Um, the county represents all rezonings and everything else happening for unincorporated Pima County. Which is a population of, what, four hundred and fifty thousand people? Um, and they have a quorum requirement of, remind me, it's, uh, appointed members, but. A- as long as quorum is met at the meeting, the recommendations that come out of there can be. They're just, they're just recommendations, they're, they're majority. And I wonder in this body, oftentimes what happens at the county is if there's a close. Vote, um, sometimes the, the board of supervisors will remand that, the issue back to the commission. To be revisited again. Does that happen here?
Not in my experience.
They also, um, establish, like through a doodle poll, the week leading up to the meeting. With, how many people will be there? And if they're not going to meet a quorum, then cancel the meeting.
Yes, uh, Commissioner Lane, we do attempt to do that with a doodle poll and then I, I, I prefer not to bring everyone down here for no reason.
Yeah. So I, I just thought we would, we would acknowledge that for perspective, that the county doesn't have a problem with the. It seems like as commissioners, we have less control over the quorum because those are decisions that have to be made by the elected officials. And we can't necessarily influence that or get them to move any faster. Sometimes we can. Um, but as, as far as the decision-making process at the, at the dais goes, I think I feel comfortable with. A majority or a super majority, if that's what people want to go with, but I don't think that, you know, if, if we handed down a recommendation to mayor and council. That's close, they're going to take that into consideration and they're going to look carefully at the discussion and they may send it back.
I, I would agree with that. Um, I think the mandatory minimum seven for quorum, I think it, it makes sense. I think we want to have. Um, ample discussion in these, uh, in this forum of, of everyone. And I think it should be incumbent upon mayor and council to ensure that there is a full planning commission. Um, because otherwise it's just hindering the, the body to adjudicate the, the issues. Um, so it's kind of at no fault of our own, right? But I do think having seven as a quorum is a good number. Um, I think with respect to the, the recommendations, it's been very disappointing to have. A majority, but not reach seven and still not have a recommendation. It's just, it, it doesn't represent it. Even if the conversation, the discussion is represented to mayor and council, does it hold the same weight as a recommendation? I don't know. Um, so I would, I would propose, I would, I would like to see that a majority. Be, uh, have a recommendation. I would, I would be willing to see a super majority, seventy-five percent or, you know. Five, a five-two vote, but I think a simple majority would do.
I would support that as well.
Do we have anybody else, uh, online virtual commissioners that have opinions or want to weigh in?
I would just, uh, like to weigh in here and say I would support everything that you just mentioned, uh, Mr. Vice Chair. I think that makes sense. I, keeping the quorum as it is, uh, but when it comes to voting and making recommendations. Uh, if we could just tweak that, I, I think, I, I can't see how many people are in person, but it looks like we have, I think, either eight or nine. Members right now, so we're, it seems like we're getting pretty close. Um, but I, I think that makes perfect sense.
We would still need a, a vote of minimum seven to get this recommended to, uh, the mayor and council.
Um, yeah.
Commissioner Martin.
So, in, in theory, we could vote to change our rules tonight with the majority. But then that would be subject to mayor and council making the code, that requesting the text change amendment. And whatever they decide, I mean, whatever they ask you to put together, to bring back to us. For us to make a recommendation back to them.
Um, Commissioner Martin, that is correct. Yes, so because it is a change to the unified development code, it would have to go through that full process, public process to make those changes.
But they could take our recommendation and say, no, we don't want to take up that code amendment.
So. Could we vote to change the rules tonight? And then wait for mayor council to.
Commissioner Martin, I believe we can vote to recommend that they take it up.
Yes.
Discussion.
There's two different things. One is to change our rules and one is to make the recommendation for the text change, I believe.
So, um, if we go back here, I think this is what you're, uh, referring to. Um, it's the second portion here where, um, if the rules that are amended or superseded by subsequent amendments to. Basically unified development code, it shall automatically be amended to conform with the subsequent code provision. So you would really be recommending a change to the unified development code, which would in turn make the, you know, change the rules and procedure.
But the second part of that is we could change our rules tonight with the majority. I thought you, that's what you said is the, the process for.
If it's, so this is, so if it, because it's in conflict with the unified development code and because it's in the unified development code. You couldn't make those changes tonight.
Yeah.
I, I have a comment. Um, so the, the mayor and council. Looked to us to do the nitty gritty work and kind of flesh out these issues. Um, in the, in the planning commission as well as other commissions across the city, um. Now. If we're not totally sure about sending this or there are some issues. Um, that need to be worked out, difference of opinions and equal on both sides, um. You know, could they look at it, well, okay, we've asked you to do this. Now you're saying, okay, you're. Now you're saying, okay, you're passing some, giving something to us where there are some issues with other commissioners not agreeing with something out of the seven, which is, is not a lot of people considering the size of this city. I'm just kind of trying to look at the opinion from the mayor, mayor and council view as what they expect out of us, that they maybe want us to be steadfast and look deeply into issues and try to figure something out. Rather than saying, okay, well, we can't decide so, but we can just send this to you. Yeah, we only, you know, we only got seventy-five percent of our quorum to agree with all this, I'm just, maybe slightly devil's advocate of as far as what's expected of us. I'm not sure is this something we should think about or talk about?
I mean, I think this is the forum to talk about it. So if I understand if I understand correctly, Commissioners of Gear, in the, your position would be that if we can't come up with seven votes in agreement and consensus, that the mayor and council shouldn't see it as a recommendation? Or as, as if some were doing, we, because we cannot come to consensus, that they shouldn't, I, I guess I'm a little bit confused as to where you're coming from with that.
Oh, well, that, I, I understand, and I'm a little bit confused, this is, 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 I'm just looking, I, you've got several sides of your brains that, that look at specific, specific issues, you have well, what if thing, so I'm just thinking, what if? I don't think that a whole lot of commissions generally don't come to the throes of totally disagreeing. But I'm just, it's, and also perception. If that's important. So, but I just wanted to throw that out there for, to mull over for a while.
Chair Ortiz Pino and commission members, I will just also add that I think it's great you're having this conversation tonight and have sort of a concept of what you want to recommend to mayor and council of what the voting structure could be, but since mayor and council will initiate it, and it will come back to the commission, there is opportunity to further refine that specific, you know, definition or requirement for voting when it comes back to the commission for in the form of a study session for a UDC amendment, so there is opportunity for ongoing discussion on this.
And I assume that we would have the opinions of the mayor and, mayor and council in their discussion to, to inform our future discussions as well. Commissioner Kenny and then Commissioner Walzak?
Yeah, so I think this is all, it's happening through this kind of circuitous route, because only mayor and councils have the ability to initiate text amendments, right? And, but we're asking them to initiate a text amendment. Once we ask them to initiate it, and they say yes, then it goes to you to send it to us again, and then back to the mayor and council for approval, maybe. So it's a little it's a circle, but I think that's why it's a circle, is because we can't actually initiate these text amendments. Regarding the, you know, the recommendation threshold, I, I think that a majority makes a lot of sense, because we're just a recommending body. But also, the mayor and council, you know, they don't have this requirement when they vote. You know, they don't need to have you know, four out of five to vote to, for a law to pass.
It takes four votes for the mayor and council to take any action, even if there's only
It's not simple majority?
No.
So it's super majority?
Absolutely not.
Okay. Thank you. So that would be a
Yep, so if the mayor and council has a minimum quorum, it takes the votes of all of those present at the minimum quorum in order to enact any legislation.
Okay. So if they have all the members present, then that is not
If they have all the members present, it takes four more votes. If there are only four votes present, four members present takes four votes.
Okay.
If there are not four votes, four members present, there is no quorum.
Majority plus one.
Okay. So, you know, I mean, I think that because we're a recommending body, and it sounds like mayor and council doesn't even have as strict a requirement as we do now, that either a majority or a super majority requirement would be fine.
Commissioner Walzak?
No, I didn't have anything else to add, other than to just make sure that Commissioner, and I hope I'm saying it right, Ziger?
Yes.
Commissioner Ziger understands that we're not making a final decision tonight, we're just beginning the process. So we'll have plenty of time to continue to discuss which threshold of a majority works for us, and we'll get to hear from mayor and council as well.
Well, yeah, I, I understand that, but I just wanted to throw out that other part of the brain that that kind of sits in the back there and says, but what if, for everybody else to think about, that's all. And thank you.
That too. We can make a recommendation once it comes back to us, that is conditional upon certain other amendments that we might want to add to it, so if it comes to us and, and we're actually voting on it, it's a hearing, we can make recommendations with conditions, correct?
Sorry, yeah, yeah, Commissioner Lampo, that is correct.
I would like to just say that, like, if, it seems like I'm having a little trouble understanding if, if the current process is actually causing a problem, or if the problem is that there's vacant seats on this board, and that's the thing that's causing the problem, so even though there's times when the board is thin, or when we're not full, like, thinking about the health of this body moving, like, in the future, i- i- is if we recommend or approve a change, or, or request a change because we're feeling pressures from vacant seats, like, that doesn't feel like the right way to make a decision like this. If this board is supposed to have thirteen members on it, and we have issues meeting our quorum because there's vacancies, the problem is that we need more members. So I mean, I've been, my, my board experience exists very much in the nonprofit world also, and so that's always like, we need a quorum president at the meeting, and then a a majority vote of those members on any decision, and that seems what this says.
And, and that's the intent, right, of a fully formed commission? The, the recommending approval would be seven, as a majority of a fully so that, that is kind of the, the issue, is that we're not fully staffed, I guess. But there are situations where there's recusals and absentees, and it's not all thirteen people can make up every single meeting, and it's volunteer board. So I, I think, I think having that language not be so strict is still beneficial. But yeah, I think there's absolutely pressures from not having a fully formed board commission.
I'm, I, I'm having the same thoughts as Commissioner Lane here about the, you know, filling out the entire thirteen member roster and, and being relatively new to this body, although every meeting I'm starting to feel like an older guy. But I, I think part of the onus is on the, is on the mayor and council to, to try to work to keep this, this body full, if, if I understand that correctly, from the appointment process. Because I think having a, a full body of as close to thirteen members as possible gives us a greater pool of commissioners who can appear at, at any one meeting. I think, and that's beneficial.
Commissioner Martin?
I'm, I'm trying to think back when there were thirteen members of the commission, and I don't know if maybe last year, or the year before, well, there was COVID, but in my eight years or so, it's eight, eight or nine is probably the max you'll get at a commission, well, we had eleven in February, but that was new president and, you know, the, the election, so but you lose members when the elections happen, and you change council members. Now you lose members after four years or eight years. And it, it's been really hard to, I think, for council, or council members and the mayor to find people that are disinterested, so I mean, it's great, this is one of the best commissions I've been on, you guys are asking questions, you're reading reading the material, so this is good, but there are just times when I don't know if there's ever been thirteen since I've been on here, I, I I have to go back and look, but I, I really don't think there's ever been a full commission in eight years, so I know that's on the council, mayor and council, but it just doesn't happen, so the planning commission is stuck with what we get, so I just wanted to bring it up before I left, because meetings got canceled because of lack of quorums. Recusals, you know, that, when you have professionals in the planning field on this commission, then people have to recue, so you may have thirteen, but you only have twelve because somebody has to recue, so it's just you know, it's your commission moving forward, so I'm just trying to throw something out there that may make a change that helps move things forward to mayor council with positive recommendations.
Absolutely. Couldn't agree more. Commissioner Lane?
Sorry, I'm kind of being silly maybe, but, I mean, the county pays us twenty dollars a meeting. I said that earlier, but I mean, it's not the biggest incentive, but dinner, and we said I also wondered if, 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 say one of us couldn't be at a meeting, could we proxy our vote in another way, is there a process for that, to establish a majority without being present? No, okay.
I, I don't see any process under a legislative system where that's, that works, I think there's maybe nonprofit boards, et cetera, that can do that, but I don't know of any precedent in a governmental structure for that.
Just the fact that the meeting is now hybrid has really helped with attendance, otherwise there'd be six people here. So I, I think that helped a whole lot with meeting quorums, but
So unless, would someone like to make a motion? I think we've had a pretty good discussion here, and I think I do hear some consensus, maybe some agreement, maybe not consensus. Someone have a, a motion that they'd like to make?
I'll do it. I'd like to make a motion to to recommend this to mayor and council to review for UDC text code amendment regarding what constitutes a quorum for the planning commission, and what constitutes the vote needed to send a recommendation to mayor and council.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Do I hear any nays? Looks like we have a unanimous favorable recommending, recommending vote.
Okay, Daniel?
All right, I guess we can move on. Item number five.
I have, I have one more question. You said this, this basically hasn't been written since nineteen seventy-five, rewritten? Does that mean that the rules of procedures should, I mean, should we just go ahead and look at the whole thing and take out all the old LDC codes and stuff like that? I'm just, I'm just asking, would it be easier just to get the whole thing done at once, if we're able to?
Commissioners of Gear, so it was established in nineteen seventy-five, but I will say that the last time it was updated, I think it was either late nineties or early two thousands. So what we need to probably do is actually all we have is even a scanned image of it, we don't even have like a word document of it, we need to re, we need to redraft up the whole rules of procedure, redo them, and then update all those references. And as it says here on the screen, which we should probably pull that off because we're off this item, but it, it automatically updates reflective of changes that have been made to the Unified Development Code, so we can do so and make those updates as of now, to make sure that it's at least updated, so that is something we need to do.
Thank you.
Generational change is happening. All right, item number five, PDSE staff announcements.
Thank you, Chair Ortiz Pino, one announcement I want to make to the commission is that we are holding two community meetings over the next couple of weeks on our Community Corridors Tool. This is a code amendment that will come to the planning commission in the future, but we want to invite you to attend either of the community meetings, if you're available. And this is an opportunity for the public to learn about these tools and share feedback. The meetings will be held on Wednesday, October thirtieth, at five thirty PM at Tucson Convention Center, and on Monday, November fourth, at eleven AM virtually on Zoom. We are excited to have the mayor join us to help introduce these tools to the community, so she'll be presenting as well as staff, and hope to see some of you there if you are interested.
So, sorry, Corin, can you, so October thirtieth at TCC, and what time does that start?
Commissioner Lampo will definitely share these with commission members, and actually Dan can send it out, and we would ask, you know, please let us know if you plan to attend the in-person meeting, so we can just ensure there's not a quorum of planning commission members, which is fine, we'll just need to notice if so, because we do welcome you to attend. So we can send that information to everybody.
Thank you.
All right, item six, future agenda items.
Yes, thank you, some future agenda items for this is the Adaptive Reuse Code Amendment, we'll have a public hearing coming back in November. And then some items that are a little further and down the road, we have the Quarter Redevelopment Tools, Corin just mentioned, we have study session for that, as well as a couple neighborhood plans, neighborhood area plans in the near future, so Menlo Park Neighborhood Plan, that's a new plan, and then also the Grant Alvernon Area Plan update as well, upping up in the near future. Thanks.
Excellent, thank you. And item number seven, call the audience, I have seen a hand up, so are they still here?
Yes, Members of the Commission, Ben Bula Garcia, Arizona Multi-Housing Association. I don't know if it's appropriate to ask a question on an agendized item, or if I should forego that.
I think as long as there wasn't a public hearing on it, then yes, you can comment on it.
Okay, and I, I apologize for coming in late, just a little safety tip before one rushes to Cox Communications to replace their modem, they should double check to make sure the cat did not unplug the Wi-Fi router, so that's, that's why I was late this, this evening, my apologies. A question on the Adaptive Reuse, if an, a parcel is not in a historic zone, would full demolition be allowed?
Only for multifamily development.
Okay, thank you.
Anywhere else from the member, from the audience want to speak?
Yes, I would like to, if I could, for the sake of this, ask a couple of questions about the Adaptive Reuse. My name is Brandon Matheson. As far as the GIS, is it possible to obtain a list of specific existing building use types that would fall into the category of commercial? Commercial office, mixed use, et cetera, that presumably includes, you know, the ten thousand two hundred and ninety buildings or so that you identified in your analysis, for example, would churches, schools, for example, fall into this broad category of commercial? That was my first question. That was my first question. I had a couple more.
Um, yeah, I can, I can respond to that. Um, I don't believe churches and schools were a part of that analysis. I will say it was a rough analysis. Um, so, uh, we are happy to provide you with kind of, you know, map of what we had done, um, with the caveat that again, this was to get a rough kind of idea of how this would impact, um, the city of Tucson. It is nothing that is, um, particularly exact.
Thank you, understood. And I guess I wasn't asking so much about the GIS itself as much as for the purpose of how this uh, code amendment would be applied. Would that be applied to commercially, you know, what commercial uses would that apply to? Would that, for example, include churches and schools and, and I wasn't so much asking, I guess, sorry for the confusion. Uh, a list that you used in your analysis, but, but more so what, uh, uses would qualify for this, uh, you know, that would fall into this code amendment that could be converted to, uh, say multifamily.
Right, thank you. Um, yeah, so, uh, pretty much what it would be is you'd look at the definitions of commercial office, et cetera, within the Unified Development Code. Um, and those would be the ones, um, that we would apply it to. So it'd really be based on definitions within the Unified Development Code.
Okay, which would exclude then schools and churches?
Um, a- as long as, I mean, that's, that's what I'm assuming. I'd have to take a look and make sure that that aligns with state bill as well, but I think it does.
You think that school and churches would be included as well?
Yes.
Oh, no, no, it, it would not. I, I don't believe it would be.
Got it, okay.
It basically, yeah, the definition is commercial office and mixed use in the bill, so it would again be, you'd look at the Unified Development Code, see what, you know, what, how that's defined and then those would be those uses.
Yeah, I have it up in front of me, the, the UDC, and I was just trying to figure out whether or not those fall into commercial or not. And I have a little difficulty doing so. So I, that's where I thought maybe the list that you used would be the list that you would, uh, you know, likely apply. Okay, um, if I could ask another couple of questions? One of the commissioners was asking if this amendment would newly incentivize mixed use with first floor, commercial and residential above. Which, you know, is, is a pretty time-tested formula for, for economic development. I was wondering how might this amendment affect the developer's ability to build residential over existing commercial use on the first floor that might fall into this category of, uh, you know, dilapidated or, uh, poorly occupied buildings?
So I don't think anything in here precludes you from being able to do that. It just doesn't necessarily require it or have specific incentives beyond what's in the bill, um, for those mixed use, like a four over one or something of that sort.
Got it, thank you. And then regarding the question of maintaining some or all of the existing building, if the decision is made to leave this more or less ambiguous, um, whose discretion would it fall under to decide what that means with respect to specific projects? In other words, um, you know, and how early in the development process would that be resolved for a given project? You know, say whether or not a foundation, right, is sufficient or if something else is required.
I, I would expect the city attorney's office would be involved in those decisions, make some sort of uh, recommendation and then prepare to defend it in court if it got there.
Okay, so there's not, is there any, uh, any interest in trying to define that here? It sounded like not. I just want to make sure I understand.
Um, no, we're going to copy and paste, as I mentioned before.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I didn't hear, hear everything that you said. I appreciate that. I had a little hard time hearing it. Um, and then finally, part, does this relate to, if, if we have, uh, often you have a parcel with, uh, different buildings of different use types on the parcel. Is there any consideration to how, uh, those types of parcels would be handled? Would it really be strictly specific building by building or would be, there be some, uh, allowance to try to allow coordination within the parcel itself? Um, to provide kind of a unified, uh, use of the parcel to conform with kind of the spirit of this, the intent of this, uh, text amendment?
I read the legislation as saying building, but I might not get an A on the bar exam if I put that answer down. It's pretty convoluted hypothetical.
Yeah.
I would, um, Mr. Matheson, I think some of these questions might, we might not be able to answer till after the code gets adopted. So I would encourage you, if you have comments on the, um, proposal, to attend the public hearing um, at the, at the date that has been set by the planning commission. And then when you have questions about how this will be implemented, those are really better for staffs to address with you after it's been adopted.
Okay, um, okay, perfect. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you for that. Are there anybody, anybody else from the member of the public that would like to speak? Hearing none. Um, I'd say go to, move to item number eight, call to adjourn.
I motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 We are adjourned. Thank you all.
Good night.